Okay, we'll call the December twenty twenty five meeting of the Mount Pleasant Planning Commission to order. I think we've got two persons that are not with us tonight. Adam called and has an excused absence and will hopefully see Emily at some point soon. First, I'll call for approval of the agenda. Is there a motion? Second, okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, motion approved, uh, motion is approved. And also, any amendments or proposed edits to the October and special November meeting minutes? If not, we'll ask for a motion to approve those. Let's do those collectively, both the October and the November meeting minutes.
I'll move to approve both.
Second, second from Mr. Smythe, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. Mr. Stone, we look to you for a planning commission recommendations update.
Good afternoon, Planning Commission.
Thanks, Chair.
We have four agenda items that were forwarded to Town Council. First reading on the annexation, initial annexation that was approved. And we had first reading on rural residential density modification that was approved with one unit per three acres. And final reading on the RC two property off of Chandler Road that was approved for RC two. And then final reading on the building area ratio and accessory dwelling unit standards. That was deferred last night at council. And it was deferred for a public input opportunity at the Mount Pleasant Holiday Market. On December thirteenth, you'll notice that Michelle will have a table. And we'll be discussing and whoever is interested is welcome to come out and discuss their concerns. Give feedback on this ordinance.
Okay, yeah, great, thank you. Any questions about those for Mr. Stone? Okay, and I'm just confirming that all the correspondence was forwarded to us in the time parameters that are allowed.
Yes, sir.
Okay, great. Okay, now's the time for general public comment. So by way of orientation, for those of you who may not be familiar with our meetings, there will be opportunities for several public hearings tonight specific to those proposals. But now would be an opportunity for anyone to bring anything to the planning commission of your, of your choice. I think we have one person. And if you wouldn't, ma'am, and this time and for others too, when we have our public hearings, if you would state your name and address for the record, that's helpful for our meeting minutes.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Cassandra Davis and my address is eleven forty eight Hero Road, Mount Pleasant, South Carolina, two nine four six six. Today, I would like to make a public comment in reference to address number fourteen ninety Boston Grill Road, TMS number five seven seven zero 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 nine three. This property is located in the Hamlin Beach community and we are a historic district through Charleston County. One of the reasons why I would like to see this request for annexation denied is because most of the homeowners and landowners who are trying to develop their land is being told by the Mount Pleasant Water Works that in order for them to receive the benefits of water and sewer that they must annex into the community, into the town of Mount Pleasant once their property touches Mount Pleasant. After doing careful research through the South Carolina legislation, I realized that they said that municipalities use state annexation statute like South Carolina Code five dash three dash one fifty for the seventy-five percent method to create ordinance requiring annexation as a condition for utility and extension. Especially for contiguous, contiguous properties with recent laws like the Private Landowner Protection Act five dash three dash fifteen twenty restricting unilateral mandatory conditions unless part of an approved plan or contract. Local ordinance like Mount Pleasant's fifty-one dash ninety zero nine two are key, but must align with state law, balancing growth with the property rights, making it a local policy decision within the state framework, not an absolute state mandate for all situation. The reason I read that is because we are requesting that the town of Mount Pleasant and Mount Pleasant Water Works work together to come up with a plan that does not make it mandatory for landowners who are located in the Charleston County region just because they are touching a Mount Pleasant property to be forcefully annexed into the town of Mount Pleasant. Most of the homeowners and landowners who will in the future build in our community would like the protection and all of the benefits that come with being in the Charleston County region. So today I would like for it to be denied and given the resident property owner the opportunity to still get water and sewer without the annexation.
Thanks, Ms. Davis, we're limited to two and a half minutes, so thank you. Okay, again, this is the general public comment period. There will be other opportunities for comments during the public hearings for other proposals. But if anyone would like to add comments, so you're welcome to do so.
Good day, my name is Myris Knight Richardson. My address is twenty-seven fifty fifty-five Earl Johnson Lane, Mount Pleasant, South Carolina. I'm the current president of the Hamlin Beach Community Association. As we talk about the Galagui community, especially the ones that have already become historic district in the Mount Pleasant area, forced annexation into the town of Mount Pleasant for sewer is causing a major hurdle or devastation to these communities. We worked very hard to get into historic district to protect, for protection. So with forced annexation for water and sewer, well, not for sewer, water, for sewer is causing an issue. The Ten Mile community, when you deal with Chandler Road and up zoning, we realize there's a lot of issue that's going on and we're asking that you put something in place for our communities that we have already established with Charleston County to protect our areas. Often we hear, we can't do anything right now because we don't have the areas. There's a lot that you already have annexed out of our communities. So when it's stated that we can't do anything right now because we don't have everything in place, it's just like saying, we can't put a fire station or fire department together until a wildfire happens. And right now, it's a wildfire that's going on in the Galagui settlement communities with forced annexation and overbuilding, clear cutting, destroying the communities. Our communities are established where we have a lot of green space. And when they annex into your area, they're asking to come in and basically clear cut these properties. So we're asking for the protection that we have in Charleston County to some way Mount Pleasant can follow in the same spot that we already have in Charleston County, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for the general public comment period? Okay, seeing none, we'll close the general public comment period and move into our agenda. Item seven A, a public hearing for thirty-three oh five North Highway seventeen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is a, I'm, I'm just gonna jump straight into the intent of this request. This was built in, this is the Pinnacle Bank Building on the corner of Highway seventeen and South Morgan's Point. It was built in the county in two thousand and seven and then annexed into the town in April two thousand and seven. And it never received a formal zone request accompanied with that annexation. So it was automatically designated as R one. It's remained that way for eighteen years. It's, it's a low maintenance commercial property. They've never, usually when they come to us, hey, we need to re-roof the building or have some kind of code violation, we'll, we'll be in touch with them. But they've, nothing has ever come up on this property. And they are now requesting AB one zoning, which is compliant with the conference of plan and would make the current use compliant. So that's all that staff has, glad to answer any questions you might have.
Any question for Mr. Stone this time?
No questions.
Okay, um, this is a public hearing, so is there anyone here to speak to this particular matter? Yes, sir, and again, as a reminder, if you would state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, Bruce Williams, twenty-seven hundred Pacers Ferry Road, Atlanta, Georgia. We bought the property in October of this year and during the due diligence period realized that this was a situation that needed to be rectified. So we talked with your staff and we applied to get it into the zoning category it should be. We have agreed for the easement for the Kenny Mile for that project, which goes on part of the property. So we're proud to be in Mount Pleasant and hope you will see fit to zone it the way it should be zoned, thank you.
Great, thanks for making the trip, sir. Is there anyone else on this particular topic? Okay, if not, we will close the public hearing. Any conversation, debate about this that seems straightforward to me?
I'll move to approve. I mean, doesn't, it doesn't preclude conversation.
Right, sure. Second, motion's been made and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. Okay, next item is seven B, fourteen ninety Boston Grill Road.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. This is fourteen ninety Boston Grill Road. It is a point nine three acre parcel that is currently vacant. It is in the county, zoned S three, which is synonymous with R C C zoning. As mentioned, it is in the Hamlin Beach Historic District designation. It does have access to water and sewer via Boston Grill Road. Current request is to annex and zone C C. As far as planning commissions per view, we're just looking at the zoning only, but that is the current request that is before you. Glad to answer any questions.
Any questions for Peter at this, at this point?
No.
Okay, this is a public hearing. If there's anyone here from the public who'd like to speak on this matter, please do so.
Hi, everyone, my name is George Green. So I am, I am the, my name is George Green. Uh, I've just bought this property in September twenty twenty-five. I love this community and I have children who looking for a school around like Jenny Moore Elementary School, so I would love to build a house here because I love this community. So I don't know what is like, that's just shown and something like that. I don't know much about it, but I would love to have a house here, live in here, in Mount Pleasant, doing business and then have my child rising here.
Okay, great, thank you.
My name is Cassandra Davis, eleven forty-eight Hero Road, Mount Pleasant, South Carolina, two nine four six six. At first, I want to say that we're excited that you purchased the property in Hamlin and we welcome you. I have spine issues, so I apologize, I couldn't turn all the way around. And, but I want to bring back to the chamber's attention that Mount Pleasant Water Works had a discussion with the Snouton community with a very, very old contract that they were trying to work on. And what happened out of that conversation was that anyone who currently had a home already built, they would be able to not be forced into annexation where they become a part of the town of Mount Pleasant. But any new builds, we would have to do it. So for example, my sister, she's building a home right behind my dad. My dad is currently not required to annex in, but my sister had to sign a contract that she's going to annex into the town of Mount Pleasant. Then the property next door, I'm gonna have to annex into the town of Mount Pleasant once my home get up. So it's a ripple effect and it will constantly tear down the community from Charleston County. And I just want to encourage the current landowner to just take a look at some of the benefits that you can get in the Charleston County area that you would not get in the town of Mount Pleasant. And it's nothing to take away from the greatness of the town of Mount Pleasant. But the C C, to me, um, it protects the, the, the zoning, but there are other things that the landowner would be able to do. And the forced annexation using water and sewer as a method to get them into the town of Mount Pleasant, I would like for it to be revisited.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Davis.
Myris Knight Richardson, twenty-seven fifty-five Earl Johnson Lane, Mount Pleasant, South Carolina. Again, we would like to welcome you and thank you for coming into the beautiful historic district of Hamlin Beach. Charleston County has an ordinance in place number twenty seventy-eight adopted in twenty nineteen that prohibits utilities from forcing annexation into the city for sewer service, aiming to let residents connect without joining a municipality, but it's also mandates connecting to the sewer if available for failing separate tanks. Forcing annexation for the water, for sewer is an issue for our communities. Once you annex into the town of Mount Pleasant, our area is a Galagui community, moderate to low income area. We allow, from the county aspect, mobile homes, modular homes. Mount Pleasant does not allow mobile homes in our community. So if you're annexing out of the Galagui communities, please work with Charleston County and the residents of Mount Pleasant for us to be able to afford to bring our children, our grandparents back into that area with homes that they can afford to build or bring onto the property. In nineteen eighty-nine, after Hurricane Hugo, monies were funded from the infrastructure. Hamlin received water and sewer from that infrastructure money, which allowed Hamlin plantation to be built. Now you're using the money in the community that afforded you to get infrastructure for Hamlin plantation to force the Hamlin Beach community to annex into Mount Pleasant. We truly think that's unfair and if we're at this point, please set up committee. You had a committee in place before, the Settlement Commission, they had recommendations. Please follow the recommendations from the settlement community. Set up a task force again to discuss what we would like to see in our community. It's one thing for businesses or, or the municipality to get together to decide what they think they want, but then they're making decisions for our communities without us being at the table. So please, again, consider not forced annexation, consider Charleston County's policy twenty seventy-eight and protect the Hamlin Beach community and all of the Galagui communities in the Mount Pleasant area, thank you.
Any, anyone else to speak on this topic? If not, we'll close the public hearing portion of the, of this particular agenda item. Okay, discussion, Ms. Ireland.
I'm sorry, did you want the applicant to?
Yeah, I'm sorry, my head went immediately. The applicant, would you care to speak to this issue? You spoke just a few moments ago, but are there other, other things that we should know about your proposal?
Uh, I'm not sure about what, what they talking about because I am Vietnamese and came to US seven years ago. I not quite familiar with the process and an annex process too. I just like to build a house and to build a house, they need water and sewer. That's it, I don't know whether it's county or Mount Pleasant, I don't care about it. Yeah, but I, I believe, I live, living in, in this area really good for my children. So I, I try to do the in good business, raising my child, that's build a house.
Yeah, thank you so much. And we understand there's a lot of complexity here, so we appreciate it, thank you. Okay, thanks, Lina.
Okay, um, so just to make it clear for people who don't know, the planning commission does not decide annexation, it only decides rezonings. But of course, these things are always discussed together because they kind of go together. But council, uh, town council will be the one to decide the annexation. But Mr. Stone, just to make sure that we're all clear, if they deny annexation, if town council denies annexation, the property still is entitled to have water and sewer, is that not right?
That's correct.
That is, okay. So there's not a problem to get water and sewer, you don't have to annex, you're requesting it, and then if it's denied, you still get it. You can't, no, you can't come back up, sorry. So that's one thing. We're having this happen in a lot of settlement community areas where the county does provide additional protections for things like additional types of housing that we don't allow in this town right now. Or there may be different lot sizes or, or setbacks, things like that, or numbers of, you know, things that can be on the property. I think at the last council meeting, which was last night, one of the council members reiterated a request to have planning staff work very closely and as quickly as possible with the county to co, you know, to sort of coordinate these historic overlays or these zoning overlays to make sure that the town can implement the same types of protections for settlement communities for the same boundaries of properties as are in the, in the county. And I hope that will be done and I'm making the same request from the planning commission to do that. But I, I think I would be a no to rezone this only because I'm trying to send the message that I don't think we should be annexing properties until we have those historic protections in place. Yes. It's a zoning, not a rezoning. So, but I don't, I mean, if, if the town were to act and deny or grant annexation, I believe C C is the automatic designation anyway. So I would probably not vote to do anything on this property because I really want to see, I don't want to see chipping away of the settlement community properties. This has happened so much and we've been talking about this for so long. And we're so close now because the county is so close to getting, if for instance, the Ten Mile, you know, community with its, a zoning district overlay that has historic protections. So I very much want to send the message that we want the same protections. We don't want to, you know, to discount anything, we don't want to deny anything that you currently have, but we still want you to become a part of the town and not just be in the county properties. So I'm, I'm hoping that we can put this off and not vote on this and we can allow this to kind of go forward and be part of the town when we're ready for it, when the town has the proper protections.
Mr. Stone, Pam's given us a little bit of an update from County Council from her vantage point. Do you have more to add or, or on, on your perspective on what County Council did last night? Its implications for us, if any, or the framework?
Sure, that, that'll be, a slide is dedicated to that, toward the end of the.
Right, and I saw that on the agenda, but now we're faced with it.
Yeah, so that was specifically geared toward the Ten Mile community and that overlay. But this was adopted in January of this year, the Hamlin Beach Historic District. And it does provide code sections that are design related, not, not just, that's something that we currently do not have categories for. We, we have provisions for subdivision, building permits, but they take it to the next level with this historic district, getting into the design and the actual look of these structures. So those are the additional protections I think that are being alluded to.
Okay.
I have a, I have a question for the planning staff. As I understand it, I was on the Historic Commission for like five years and one of the things that Historic Commission can do is recommend other historic districts to be created. And I never heard anything about any of these other communities in the town. It seems like, it seems like the town would need to coordinate and set up the same historic district and work to honor the same, you know, design related items that they do in the Old Village. Has, has there been any coordination on this?
There has, so, and that's actually the reason that Old Village Historic District is, is called that rather than the historic district. It's, it's creating a, this is specifically for the Old Village and creates an opportunity for us to create more historic districts elsewhere within the town. But yes, I mean, we are definitely in coordination with the county and this has been a three-year process for them to develop this. We may be borrowing from that and, and, and trying to implement our own form of historic district within these, these areas.
Yeah, because I mean, I think that would alleviate a lot of the concerns. You know, you have protection and then you get annexed and now maybe you don't, so.
Mr. Davis?
So I, I have a question, I'm just trying to simplify something in my own mind here. So I've listened to the public comment and then I listened to the applicant. And I'm, I'm trying to, I, I, I guess I really don't understand what the public comments have to do with seven B. I mean, can, can, can you explain it to me? I mean, there's been a lot of talk about zoning and this and that and so forth, but specifically since we're dealing with seven B, how do the public comments, you know, address that? That I can't understand.
Mr. Davis, that's a good question. I'm gonna go from this from a legal perspective because I don't want to interfere with any discussion this commission is having. But the sole issue in front of this commission tonight is a zoning question as to whether this property should be zoned C, uh, C C and not the town's annexation policy. It is perfectly fine for this commission to put that on a future agenda and discuss that. My legal concern is that we are off the agenda with this discussion and it's completely irrelevant. And, and while this council or this commission can make any recommendation it wishes, that's my concern and I think you asked a relevant question. Yeah, thanks for orienting us on that, David. And I think the, the comments and input from members of the community is valuable. We just have to remind ourselves what we've been asked to do here as a planning commission on this particular topic, on this agenda. And we've, we've been there before on many occasions and, but it's, it's a great reminder, so thanks, thank you for that. Independent of whether we agree, disagree, or want to modify some of the other factors that drive some of these decisions, what we've been asked to do is either approve or deny the zoning request. As narrow as that, yeah.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, and I was just gonna add to that and I understand what Pam, you know, the overall intent associated with your thoughts and, and I agree, I hope that there are discussions down the road. I just, we got an owner that I don't want to put him through, you know, for, and, and nor is his application anywhere related to, you know, lobbying for that effort. So, you know, I'm inclined, I mean, it's a very odd shaped piece of property, flag lot. It's not a lot that is able to be done with it, except for the home on the back of it. So I really don't have any concern reservations and it seems like it's consistent with the other town zonings in that area. So that's just where I fall on it.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, so, so I understand again, so basically the applicant wants to build a house in this property. That, that, that's the bottom line.
That's it.
And right now, and right now, this property is not in Mount Pleasant, it's in, it's in the county.
That's correct.
And, but he needs, he needs water and sewer in order to build a house.
And so. And he could build it whether he's in the county or in the town.
Okay, so, so what, okay, so.
Oh, that's right.
I would have to, oh, so if he built it without being in Mount Pleasant?
Without having a denial by town council of the annexation.
But does he need, does he need to be, I don't understand, does he need to be annexed? If he, if he get water and sewer anyway, what's?
He is contiguous to Mount Pleasant property. And so if he wants water and sewer, he's got to annex into the town. That's the way the rules are, are associated currently.
But if he's not annexed, does he still get water and sewer?
If he's denied annexation, so he still has to apply for annexation, he just, he just have it approved or denied.
But again, what even has to do is.
So the, the request before you and the action we taken is if you would recommend to committee and council C C zoning for this property.
I move to approve.
I second it.
I third.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve.
You're, you're, you're ahead right now, you're ahead. You're, you're ahead right now, you're ahead.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the, the request.
And I would just note that the zoning right now in the county, which is where this property is located, is exactly the same effect. It is the same thing
Right.
as what we would zone, if we were to zone it.
Okay, we'll take the vote then. All those in favor say aye? Any opposed?
No.
Okay, motion carries. Topic seven C, this too is a public hearing for sixteen fifty-one Highway forty-one.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is a similar request off of Highway forty-one. It's one point two four acres. Currently in the county, zoned S-three. This is within the Phillips Community Historic District designation. Water and sewer is available, and the property serving this one dwelling unit that is currently on the site is on water and sewer currently. So, current request is to zone CC, and that is the request before you. Glad to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions for Mr. Stone at this point?
Just, I guess, hold on. Once again, if this, this property. Mr. Stone.
Go ahead.
That's okay. So, this property, if, if it does not come in to the town's zoning, it is zoned the same effect in the county, is that right? What is it zoned in the county right now?
S-three.
S-three, which is the same as the, as CC would be here.
Correct.
Okay.
I apologize, there is an error on the agenda.
Yeah, Mr. Davis.
It says RC-two.
Correct.
The public hearing ads, I know for a fact, and the application both state CC, so David, I apologize. What would be the correct action to take for this?
I mean, do we wait till next month? Right. Right. I, I, I agree, David. So, do we need to take an action then, or do we just? Move to defer? Okay. Got it. Okay, so we'll just, we'll just elect to strike that, Mr. Stone.
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, then we'll move on to agenda item seven D. Again, another public hearing for sixteen oh-two Rifle Range Road.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is a request to annex and zone R-three. This is in the county as R-four. And it's surrounded by R-three zoning, that's Laurel Lake subdivision that was created in nineteen ninety-six. It's across the street from the Mount Pleasant Water Works facility. Current request is for R-three zoning. And part of that request was, R-three is adjacent, and it was requested. But, I guess, it, it is most synonymous with what they currently have in the county. The R-four in the county looks like our version of R-three. So, that was the reason for their request. However, there is a distinction to be made here. Laurel Lake subdivision is an insulated development. This is a property that fronts and is addressed off of Rifle Range. And you can see that maybe the thought process was that it would aggregate into Laurel Lake subdivision. But based on the layout of these property lines, it's dimensionally pretty challenging to accomplish with any kind of access off of that cul-de-sac, so. So, we'll look at the future land use and the comprehensive plan to kind of direct us. This has a designation of conventional neighborhood, which the compatible zoning designations would be RR, R-one and R-two. So, that is the current setup and staff is glad to ask any, answer any questions you might have.
Questions for Peter. Is the applicant present to present on this?
I have a question. So, what, what's the?
Okay, seeing none. Yes, sir.
I'm still getting familiar with all the different zoning designations. What are the major differences between like R-three? What, what are the major differences between R-three and R-two? Like that you suggest in this?
Really, it comes down to lot size. R-one would be ten thousand square feet, minimum lot size. R-two is eight thousand square feet, minimum lot size. You go to R-three, it goes down to six thousand square feet minimum to create a lot within that zoning designation. This lot is fifteen thousand square feet, if that gives you any kind of indication of what the intent would be here.
So, R-three, it could be subdivided?
Could.
This is a public hearing. If there's anyone to speak on this particular proposal, now would be the time to do that. Okay, we'll close the public hearing. A discussion on the proposal?
I mean, I, I wanna be true to the comprehensive plan. And that's, that is not compatible with R-three for this property. That's.
Other thoughts, comments?
Yeah, I mean, I, I wouldn't think it'd be appropriate if this was R-three and the property were subdivided. Wouldn't fit in with what's around it.
All right. Any counterarguments or thoughts, concerns? If not, we got two, two persons who sounds like would propose to deny.
I'll move to deny.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion's made and seconded to, to deny the proposal to zone this at R-three. All those in fa, all those in favor of denial, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Motion carries to deny. Item seven E, again, this is another public hearing for thirteen oh-six Irkman Drive.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In planning commission, good evening. I wanna introduce myself, I'm Chris Louber with the planning department. I'll be presenting the next couple of agenda items for you tonight. And so, this first agenda item is a request at thirteen oh-six Irkman Drive to rezone from currently AB-one to R-two. And you can see here where it's located, it's that triangular shaped lot there at the corner of Irkman and King Street. And they're showing the current zoning at AB-one across the street. You have the R-two, and then also you have that little enclave there, north of the, down the road there, that's R-two as well. The future land use is neighborhood scale commercial. And then, basically, I wanted to give a little quick summary of how this came to be. So, going back in time, this house was built originally in nineteen sixty-seven. We didn't have zoning ordinance at that time or zoning code. That was implemented in seventy-nine. And so, this house existed there before we had zoning. And basically, it came to us, they, they came with a addition, they wanted to add on to their house. And we, we told them it's a non-conforming land use, which this new ordinance and non-conforming land use does not allow them to expand their footprint of their house or add any intensity of the residential use. And so, that's why this is here before you today. They need to rezone the property to residential uses to allow them to do an addition. And that is all I have. I'm here to answer any questions. Thank you.
Questions? It's an odd shaped parcel too, which maybe adds a little bit to the complexity, I would think. Yes, sir. Questions? Yep, is the applicant here? Would love to hear from you. Yes, yes, ma'am. You would state your name and address for the record.
Hi, everyone. I'm Kelly Sartan. I'm here to speak for myself and my dad, John Riles, that lives at thirteen oh-six Irkman Drive. It's, like they said before, it's always been residential, so it was a big surprise to us when I already got a mortgage and everything to add on to the house for them to say, nope, that's not gonna happen. My dad's been in that house since nineteen sixty-seven and raised me in that house. And as they're getting older, they're both disabled. It's been, I'm an only child, a single mom. I just wanted to add a thousand square feet to the house so I could help take care of them and they can help take care of me. So, they're, they need my help. I'm, I live across the street right now, renting, and I would love to just be considered to let them, you know, stay in their house.
Great. Thank you. Okay, again, this is a public hearing, so if there's anyone from the public who would like to address this topic, now would be the time.
Commissioners, my name is Elise Campaign. I live at thirteen fourteen Wayne Street, right around the corner from this property. And I wanna offer strong support for allowing it to continue in residential purpose. Not only does that make sense for the reasons that you just heard from the applicant, but the intensity of the use of the space across the street will benefit from having this remain in a residential capacity. So, strongly support this suggestion. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, we'll close the public hearing. Comments or questions, debate, discussion?
I'll just mention, I mean, normally, I don't approve of having property that's commercial rezoned to residential because we wanna retain the commercial property zonings that we have here. But this is a unique situation. So, you know, I'm inclined to do differently this time, and that's why. I mean, I think the fact that this has been a residence for so many years, and it has support, that's the correspondence we received. It's got support from the neighbors, and it's just a small wedge. It does not affect the other commercial properties all around. So, you know, I see it as very reasonable request.
Yeah, I agree with Ms. Ireland, and I'd like to see a motion to approve.
I would agree.
Okay.
I'll second.
And second from Ms. Ireland. Any further discussion? If not, we'll call for.
Only concern is that we've previously denied.
I'm sorry, Ken.
My only concern is we've previously denied zoning in this area because of the future of land use. I'm just putting that on the record that we have in the past.
I think Ms. Ireland touched on that at least.
Yeah, and I think Mr. Stone could elaborate a little bit because I think it was a different sort of situation when we were denying that other request.
Certainly. The request, I believe it was on the corner of Simmons and Rose. That was definitely a situation where it was clearly indicated that it was commercial and is viably commercial. And that just generates a diverse tax base. This, there is a question about whether it would be viable as a commercial site, just based on the parking, stormwater and
sizing.
sizing of it.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you, Peter.
Thanks for that clarification. Appreciate you bringing that up. We're trying to be logically consistent.
I just wanna like clarify one thing. So like, as the town grows and develops, this could potentially be a viable commercial lot. Because of the planning in place, if someone came back in like ten years or fifteen years and wanted it switched to commercial, would that be like an automatic or would that be?
It would, so, it being where it is in the future land use that we currently have, it would, I don't know, it'd be automatic. But it would certainly help if it needed to switch back to commercial at that time that maybe they, they would like to sell. It could be aggregated into a neighboring commercial parcel. But as, as the current property lines are currently drawn, it would be very difficult.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think I, my inclination is to like let the current user decide what's most viable now in these grazes. Because, I mean, we see so many commercial properties like empty or turning over very quickly. Like, I don't know the commercials like in super demand right now in this corridor, so. I, I'd be in support of needing it residential for now.
Yeah, I mean.
Okay, I think we take a vote. Okay, motion was made and seconded, I think, and take a vote. All those in favor of the zoning change, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. We move to item seven F, public hearing for fourteen thirty-seven and fourteen thirty-nine Vining Road.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, this was withdrawn by the applicant.
Yeah, that F was withdrawn.
Okay. Missed that, all right. We'll go to seventeen G, correct? Okay. Eleven thirty-four Gregory Ferry Road.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And so, this one also, it was a little late, but they have also requested to withdraw this afternoon due to the right-of-way acquisition for Highway forty-one. They would likely come back with reduced acreage to annex and request zoning, which will make it a substantial new request, so they would not need to wait for the one-year progression. Need to go through it.
I think if you could either grant their requests for deferral, which would function as a denial or withdrawal, or just deny, either way, that would be.
David, does that make a difference?
Yeah, yeah. And the former being.
For granting their request for withdrawal.
I moved to grant their request to withdraw.
Yeah, I'll second that. Concern or discussion? Okay. All those in favor of granting it withdrawal, say aye? Any opposed? Okay. I guess we move to seven H, is that still good?
Yeah.
Okay, this is a public hearing for Land Development Regulation Text Amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Kevin Mitchell, our town engineer, will be presenting this, this text amendment.
Good evening. Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the planning commission.
Kevin, can you just adjust your microphone, please?
Thank you. Got it? Good evening, everyone. We've got a, a presentation. We'll try to be brief and concise with this, but what we have is a, kind of an unofficial public hearing here. It's for the implementation of a wetland, isolated wetland ordinance for the town of Mount Pleasant, which is something fairly new. It's gonna be kinda new for no, most municipalities. But before I get into it, just as a matter of information, we did receive one letter December ninth from the Southern Environmental Law Center, which we will pass that along. It was received late. So, we were unable to send that out to you before the meeting, so we will give that to you following the meeting here, so.
Was it in support or was it opposed or was it? What's the gist? Or can you?
The gist of it was, they kinda took exceptions to the exceptions that we had. And they did say that our ordinance was overly broad and insufficient, so, anyway. So, I would think that would be a negative. But you will receive this following the meeting, so you'll, you'll have that as information on this. So, just a little background here. We've been working on this for a little while now. This kinda was kicked off by the Flood Resiliency Committee. The mayor headed that. He wanted the town staff to look into developing an isolated wetland ordinance. And, and tonight, well, it has gone through the Green Commission for that. A number of times, it's gone back through, which we'll touch on that a little bit. And then, and then it went through the Flood Resiliency Committee presentation the third of December. And now, it's come for you on the, on the tenth here tonight for kind of an unofficial public hearing. Because it is in land development regulations, it's not in the zoning code regulations what's being proposed, so. Public hearing will be at town council if and when we get a solid recommendation for an ordinance to move forward. From here, it'll be updated to the Flood Resiliency Committee as well as the Planning Committee. And then, hopefully on the town council sometime in the new year. Okay, so there'll be plenty of times for commentary and input and things like that, and I imagine. And I imagine, uh, it might circle back and come to you, uh, as well. It all depends on what. The flood resilience and planning committee would like to do with the ordinance, okay? A little bit of background. This, uh, this, uh, the wetlands itself has historically been something. For the Army Corps of Engineers and the Department of Environmental Services, uh, that's their expertise. And, um, and what kind of brought this about was the regulations that, that did change. That redefined the, uh, definitions of waters in the US, and that resulted from the twenty twenty-three US Supreme Court ruling. Sackett versus EPA where there was a small isolated wetland EPA. Did not want them to fill it, but Sackett wanted them to fill it, so a lawsuit ensued and it went all the way to the US Supreme Court. And as a result, the change of the US, uh, waters of the US definition was changed. So, anything that is overland flowing into, uh, a larger water body. Uh, is considered an isolated, uh, is considered a jurisdictional wetland. If it is not, uh, connected hydraulically. Then it is an isolated wetland, so. I am not an expert in this field, by the way, so, uh, I'm learning as we go here. Uh, so what, I think what the mayor and, and council wanted us to do is just kind of get that gap. That is now have been created with that regulation. And, and from a local level, try to protect some of the unprotected isolated areas. Or what you would be calling kind of a perennial pool area, which is similar to what's pictured here, just as an example. So, we took this before the Green Commission. Uh, we did have, uh, a kind of a boilerplate to work off of, uh, uh, Bluffton, uh, City of Bluffton was moving forward with, with their regulations. So we were familiar with the format setup, um, things of that nature. So we were kind of working off that and. Uh, during that Green Commission meeting, it was, um, some options about, uh, how to kind of move this forward. Option two was the chosen option is to create a sub-working group made of two, uh, two of the Green Commission members. Uh, someone from the Army Corps of Engineers and then someone from the private sector, uh, wetlands, uh, industry. That was part of this working group. So, we met, uh, kicked around some ideas. Came up with basically some very high-level, what the purpose-driven, uh, uh, conditions of this ordinance would really be. Just nailing it down to the bare bones of this ordinance is to be created just to protect non-jurisdictional wetlands. Which is important because the wetlands that are jurisdictional are already being protected by the Corps. So, this is just to very clearly protect those isolated wetlands. Second set procedures and protection, preservations, of course, and then also try not to be in conflict with people's private property rights. Or be in, uh, uh, disagreement with any prior agreements. You know, we don't want to get this sidetracked. And legal lawsuit issues, so we want to make sure and be very sensitive to people's private property rights. Which, that's what we are discussing is private property rights, so. So, during the, the Green Commission situation, uh, we're taking it back and forth and working with the working group and stuff. We looked at the green space preservation ordinance that we currently have in place in the land development regulations. And we felt like that might be a very good fit to incorporate the protection of wetlands within that chapter. The chapter is one fifty-five oh five four, uh, it does kick in when there's five acres and greater being developed. So anything below that would not really pertain to the green space, but this being new, we, we felt like, um. This would be a very good fit if we did incorporate, uh, the ordinance within this particular area. And within this land development chapter. So we moved forward with that, uh, as a kind of a mock-up, uh, mock-up ordinance. Uh, just to see how it was presented, how it worked and, uh, see, tried to get some feedback. What our approach was, was to capture smaller subdivision requests. We're dealing with small isolated wetlands for the most part. What would likely be in more, the most impactful to those, uh, isolated wetlands are. The subdivision requests that, uh, we felt like were more threatening to those type of general areas. We did want to take advantage of some opportunities to double count some of the, uh, green space, uh, with environmentally sensitive areas. So, you know, we didn't really want to approach this in very heavy-hand, heavy-handed manner, um. We also, uh, wanted to incorporate and engage a wetlands professional in doing this. As I said, I'm not a professional wetlands person and, uh, we don't have anybody on staff. So, we would be relying on wetland professionals to make decisions along the way with this. And also in, uh, approaching it as a subdivision, uh, angle, we, that does give us an opportunity to. Begin building an inventory of where these, uh, areas exist. Because they would be identified on a plat of record, it would be recorded in a matter of public record. So it all made sense. So, uh, we also felt like, you know, another aspect is to, um. Allow for it to retain, uh, some stormwater runoff retention, so it kind of double counts a little bit towards that. So it does kind of balance the two, uh, ability to develop property as well as trying to protect the integrity of the wetlands. And approach this in a public-private partnership, uh, in recognizing that, you know, protecting features, uh, not accounted for. Uh, for the consideration of subdivision design, because right now, if it's not shown or if it's not identified, you don't really have, uh. The ability to plan for it when you're planning a layout of a subdivision. The, the strike-through there, that is actually an old strike-through, um, the frontage buffer is still going to be part of the green space. Uh, preservation, so this is an old slot. Uh, now getting in a little bit more of the ordinance itself, uh, this is the outline. Uh, the mission statement, uh, which y- you should have copies of it, um, that was included with this presentation. So we won't get into line by line of everything. The findings itself is generally the warehouse statements. Once it gets into the legal arena, they start creating a format for an ordinance to be moving through. Uh, that's where the, the warehouse, uh, stuff, the justification for the ordinance. Now, once we get into the specific requirements, uh, this is where we start nailing down to what this really does apply to. Uh, as mentioned, we're looking solely at subdivision requests. If you have one lot and you want it subdivided and make two lots. Then you would have to move forward through a, uh, this would be applicable to that. And also retain the green space, uh, preservation standards. Um, if you had more than five acres that you were developing, then that would be applicable. So we didn't really want to change what was currently in place at that time. Uh, and then we got into the, the smittle requirements. We will not get too far into the weeds on that, Maeve. Uh, we'll take you through that here. The buffer was discussed at some length. We did propose a smaller buffer through the discussions with the Green Commission. They recommended that that be increased a little bit, and we'll discuss that in a second. Uh, again, the green preservation, that is a condition of lot sizes and the percentage of open space. No change there. Uh, street frontage was, uh, discussed about being removed, but it was also left in there. The exceptions will expand on a little bit too. That was a lot of discussion at the, uh, Flood Resiliency Committee, um, about that. Um, and then the procedure itself, no change. Plan, these sort of conditions will come before this board here for their review and approval like a normal subdivision. So it will be part of the subdivision request, so. That's very high-level, touching a little bit on, uh, some of these, uh, internal items of the ordinance itself. Um, so, uh, you know, for the sake of time, you can read it yourself, but there's some strike-throughs. The black strike-throughs are existing language, the red is the proposed. Uh, what we are proposing is a new title, Green Space Wetlands and Environmental Protection Plan. We are, uh, proposing to, uh, take the environmental guidelines and then put them in another subsection. And just kind of break those two up because the environmental guidelines, that's really for non-residential stuff. So it just kind of made sense to, to section that out, uh, with doing that. We will move through this kind of quickly, but please, if there's anything you would like to discuss, feel free to interrupt. Uh, and the findings, uh, we want to prioritize wetlands, uh, and again, not do double duty. When there are federally protected wetlands. Um, we do want to recognize that those are irreversible losses once, uh, those type areas do get, uh, impacted. Um, and, um, and there's, you know, plenty of justification for moving through, uh, and having this as an ordinance. Because we are protecting the quality of life for our residents.
Mr. Mitchell, I think you've answered the questions that I had originally, just through your commentary, but the one question that you've not touched on yet. Is, um, defining these wetlands as green space. Um, I think I understand the logic, but, but if you would, would you elaborate on that?
Sure, yeah. We're not defining them as green space. We're saying that if you're five and, five acres and greater. That there's a, there's a twenty or thirty percent area of that five acres that is preserved for green space. Those isolated wetlands could be part of that.
That very well, but that's what I mean.
Yes, sir.
I don't know, I just. Yeah, yeah, but, but, but if, if the Green Commission is, Green Commission is in support of this, is that what I'm hearing?
Uh, on a four-to-one vote.
Okay.
They voted this, uh.
Okay.
To move forward.
Yep.
But again, y'all's feedback and commentary will be incorporated and updated to the Flood Resilience. Committee as well as the Planning Committee, so if the Planning Commissioner would like to recommend some changes. They will be, uh, brought up at, at the committee level, so.
I mean, I have a thought adjacent to that, like if you aren't including them in that requirement. Like, how would the town know if someone destroys one of these wetlands before they even come in for a subdivision? Like, if they know it's going to be a problem, they're going to want to get rid of it. So if you say that you can count it in that percentage, then they won't be as like scared of like, oh, I gotta bury this thing before I come in for a subdivision.
I think they'd have a hard time pulling that off in our community. Um, I understand the logic, but. I just don't think that anyone could move enough dirt around without, without somebody knowing about it to accomplish that. I don't know.
It's, yeah. I mean, we always worry about people doing things in the middle of the night, but that applies to a lot of things, but.
That's true.
We would be relying on other people to report that sort of activity.
Right.
And then we would investigate that activity.
I mean, I, I feel like green space, although it's not defined this way, is sort of something that assumes a certain amount of usability. You know, like parky kind of, you know, green space. Wetlands really isn't.
You can walk on it.
Yeah, like you can walk on it, you could throw a dog, you know, a ball or something.
Sure.
Um, so that's why I'm concerned about, you know, sort of subsuming one into the other. Because I think it sort of gives a lot of, uh, credit to somebody that is not, they could use this area that's unusable. And say, well, you know, this is green space now, you know, we've got houses on the rest of it or whatever.
As long as you've got an intention bond, that's green space.
Green space, right.
Yeah. Well, uh, you know, the green space is, uh, intended to preserve the existing vegetation. And character of the area within here, and I'm trying to pinpoint it, but there's a minimum four thousand square feet of active space. That is to be used for that sort of active type of, uh.
Right.
Use already incorporated into the existing green space ordinance, which we're not changing.
I think your buffer was pretty small that you had settled on, and I think that kind of allows you to develop like. Maybe a trail that is adjacent to it. I mean, I don't know if, I mean, Ion has that area where you can like walk through it.
Yeah.
Like, I don't know if you could even do that now, but, you know, it's a pretty nice feature of the neighborhood.
Yeah.
Um, the one gray area though is like, it seems like there's this big gap between like, I'm going to subdivide one lot. Or at five acres, like what happens in between?
Well, the wetlands would pertain to everything, um, above that. Above the, of the one lot into two or one lot into a hundred, you would still have the same wetlands condition applied. The green space standards would apply after five acres.
Okay.
Okay? Starts the, yeah, it overruns.
Gotcha.
I mean, is it, maybe as kind of a compromise, what about, you know, fifty percent of the wetlands could be counted towards the green space? Or something like that, maybe something that's not all, you know, A equals B. But something that's less than that. I'd like them to consider that, and that's sort of a, a little bit of a.
Yeah. Shall we continue?
Yes, please.
We will summarize and.
Yeah.
And report all this up for consideration. The findings, specific requirements. Oh, that is Maeve, uh, Maeve Gimbert. Our environmental manager will take you through the supplemental requirements very quickly.
Good evening. So this goes into the, um, specific requirements. A wetland and full environmental assessment are required when one or more additional lots are proposed. And as we've just kind of gone over, under our green space and preservation plan, some of these requirements already apply. To subdivisions, five acres and greater, so this is not taking away any of that, it's actually adding to it. And now we're including those smaller pieces of land that also include wetlands and environmentally significant areas. Um, if you go down to two, the plant's middle requirements, applicants are now required to hire an environmental professional. Who is trained in identifying wetlands, seasonal, perennial pools, evidence of active habitats, soil types and hydrology. This allows staff to better assess the environmental value of the sites and work with the applicant to preserve these areas.
I have a question, really.
Yeah.
Like, you, you said the town doesn't have anyone with this expertise, so how are you going to negotiate? You know, with someone who has the expertise? Cause like obviously a developer is going to want their person that they hired to shrink it. Whereas we want it to be like real.
Uh, we will take that professional, uh, opinion and that's what we will do. So that's how it's planned and it's being proposed and it's like an arborist about a tree. The person that wants to take the tree down or the developer or the owner, they hire their own professional. And we evaluate what their proposal is and will rely on their professional expertise.
But I think with the trees, I don't know if now, but in the past, the town has had an arborist on staff. I, I just feel like if you don't have an expert, like you're going to need like an on-call contract. With like a couple other experts, so, you know, just to have that in your arsenal of, you know, information.
Um, I'm tracking the same direction you are. It, it, right now, uh, I think this will grow and will build. And will be a program of similar things, and we may have somebody that is a wetland professional in the future. If we run across the need to have somebody, um, our objective right now is to get a solid, workable. Reliable ordinance in place, uh, quickly. And, and then if it, if the opportunity or if the need arises in the future, if we do have some. Concern that things are not being properly done, then yes, we will explore expanding this and then, uh, moving in that direction.
Kevin, one way to handle that might be to just put in there that the town in its discretion can engage, um. You know, its own environmental professional to assess, and that gives you the leeway without having to come back and revise the ordinance to do that.
That's a, that's a very good point, so.
Alright, um, so going down to D, we have a list of reference standards for determination. Which includes the Federal Manual for Identifying and Delineating Jurisdictional Wetlands. And this is currently used by the Army Corps of Engineers. And additional materials from EPA and South Carolina Department of Environmental Services. Alright, and E, we have included biodiversity evaluation to assist in habitat protection. And it's important to ensure that there are several plants and animals on site. Um, and this adds to the overall health of ecosystem. Three, we have our buffer. Um, this was the result of, I think this is the older. I updated this, but I don't think it made it in here in time. Um, it should be. The buffer area shall be a width averaging ten feet with no more than twenty feet and no less than five feet. Measured perpendicular from the outside boundary of the environmental protection area. So this is what we, we originally went to Green Commission with no buffer, they suggested a buffer. We came back with what you see on the screen. They suggested a larger buffer, so that is where we get the average width of ten, no more than twenty, no less than five. Um, number four, this is keeping our previous standards for green space. We have rearranged some things to help with the flow, so we've moved the street frontage area of preservation. And we have created a standard planting in the absence of existing vegetation, and that will be in C four E.
Who, who ends up ultimately determining that buffer since it's variable?
Um, there are several municipalities that vary in buffer. You, we've, the intention of the buffer was some, having something was better than having nothing. But with the smaller lots, we didn't wanna create too extreme of a hardship on the property owner where building wasn't feasible anymore.
So the town used their discretion, or will that come to like?
It was the town in conversation with Green Commission to come with those numbers, yeah.
Mr. Barber, um, what, what we were envisioning is these smaller areas, these, these little pockets. So we, you know, um, and, and trying to address what we foresee Mount Pleasant. Dealing with in the future, and that is one acre, two acre, three acre lots, as things become annexed. The unincorporated areas start becoming more intense out. Those are the areas that will likely have those isolated wetlands. So, uh, just in light of our anticipation of smaller lots, smaller areas. We wanted to, we felt like it would be better if we just aimed kind of low on the buffer and have a buffer. Um, but that was the reasoning behind it. There was nothing magical about it. Other municipalities, I think, have fifty and seventy-five feet. And I, I think in their mind, they were thinking much larger tracts of land and much bigger areas where Mount Pleasant is. You know, those type areas are done. Yeah, thank you, sorry. But there, we won't be seeing them as much as we have in the past. So we were trying to tailor this to what would fit better with somebody that had one or two or three acre pieces of property that wanted to.
No, I mean, I agree with having the range. I'm just like, what are the mechanics of you guys? Dictating that on a given project, like it, like, is it a commission that deals with it, or you guys internally, or?
Well, if, uh, subdivision will come before you, uh, the Planning Commission. They will have, the applicant will have a, uh, proposal for these buffers. And it does provide flexibility being an average ten foot where a minimum and a maximum is applied. So they can move the buffer around shorter on one side and bigger on the other side, depending on the configuration. So we wanted to provide some flexibility. Uh, but again, this is a working document. Uh, we are open to, you know, discussions, recommendations. This will all be brought before the, the Flood Resilience Committee.
I mean, I'm just wondering if that, uh, Green Commission, I don't know if they would be the ones that have like a better. Feel for what that should be, or I don't know. I'm just saying like, I, I'm not sure if this is laying out whose responsibility is what. When this type of item.
Uh, we're leaving it to the applicant to con, uh, provide the layout of the subdivision. And incorporate the buffer measures that, um, that allow him the flexibility for the design he would like, he was, he's proposing. So I, I don't know, I don't know if I'm helping or not.
Let me just ask a question that may go to this. So let's say we get a subdivision proposal. And it shows a buffer of five feet all around the wetlands. Could we say we want the buffer to be more like ten feet? I mean, do we, do they have to average it at ten so that? In other words, is there flexibility of us to approve something, um, based on what they're proposing? Or do they say, we've met the minimum, so you know, you have no right to ask for more?
Yeah, I think, um, you can correct me if I'm wrong on this, but they would need to average a width of ten. With flexibility of having twenty in some areas, having five in others.
They can sort of configure it whichever way they think fits best.
Very similar approach as our critical line.
But they're responsible for hitting the average. They can't go lower than that. Okay, got it.
I guess I just come back to like, I think it's gonna, what makes sense is gonna vary on every plan. The correlation in my mind is like the old, or the historic district commission has like power over setbacks, which normally. There's no flexibility on except there. And like literally the commission looks at the project and decides whether or not it makes sense. So like I, I feel like without having like some mechanics written in here. This commission isn't gonna have much power to really give input on it. If it literally meets the average, but we don't think it makes sense, it sounds like we won't be able to have our. You know, thoughts considered in the, in the plan.
I don't think we get to that level of detail to, you know, I think the ordinance would, would dictate. And it, it is up to the applicant, I think. I wouldn't, I'm not sure I would feel comfortable saying what makes sense or what doesn't. As far as a.
Well, that's why I was wondering if the Green Commission needs to have more say in that. I don't know.
I mean, that might be a jurisdictional question is, you know, how, what do they have the right to, to do in terms of overseeing subdivisions? You know, I don't think they do that.
No, I mean, I think the point is that they're, they're establishing policy. Parameters, and then the planning commission is responsible for working within those as we're making these decisions on. Setbacks and, you know, all the other factors or variables. Yes, ma'am, I'm sorry, we've, we've interrupted you.
I appreciate the conversation. Um, I think we covered this slide. And, okay, so we were on number four, green space areas preservation. So now we're in subdivisions that are greater than five acres. So we currently already have green space preservation for this. We've just moved some things around and adjusted it a bit. So this is the percent of green space required for subdivision. Or five acres and greater, the lot sizes are either greater than ten thousand square feet or less than ten thousand square feet. So the only thing we've adjusted here is that they can now include those areas of preservation to count towards their green space requirement. And that would be non-jurisdictional wetlands and areas deemed to be of environmental significance. And then E, this is where we created, um, that standard planting plan in absence of vegetation. It's a little bit easier to check for, um, than previously was. So in the absence of vegetation, the applicant shall plant three native understory and one native class one or. Class two canopy tree for each a hundred square feet of cleared area. F, these are the same exceptions, so within the green space. Um, it should be located in an HOA parcel that is publicly accessible. Um, it shall remain essentially undisturbed except for clearing of an eight-foot wide corridor for the installation of low-impact physical improvements. Such as a pedestrian trail or a four thousand square foot recreational field. This is where we have relocated the twenty-five foot natural and undisturbed buffer. When there is an entry road that is sixty feet or greater. And all of the blow remain the same. We've, they've just changed in, um, lettering, numbering because of our relocating. And then we move into the exceptions, which Kevin is gonna take over.
Okay. Let's get into the nitty-gritty. Exceptions. What, uh, what, what the ordinance is proposed to be applied for and. Uh, applicable to and what is not. And again, this is a working document, okay? So, um, the, some of the obvious things that would not be subjected to the ordinance. There are boundary surveys, plats of record, adjusting side lot lines. Um, between neighbor and agreements of neighbors such like that, that would be accept, uh, part of the exceptions. Subdivisions in residential, uh, neighborhoods and planned communities with no prior traces of wetlands. Found during a wetlands evaluation, there's no, uh, suspected areas of environmental concern contained within the boundaries. Uh, C, there are no, there are no wetlands, uh, within the parcel within five, from the parcel within five hundred feet of the boundary. As shown on the, uh, NRCS or the, uh, US Fish and Wildlife Wetland Inventory Map. Uh, so if it's outside the five hundred feet and there's no detection of, of, of wetlands on the, the property. Uh, then you would be exempt. Um, but if it's within five hundred, so there is some, a, a database that is. Uh, not specifically accurate, but there's a database that we can actually use that. Um, that will, uh, will help us, uh, investigate property that could potentially have wetlands. Uh, and D, uh, D was under some discussion, uh, the Flood Resilience, uh, Committee. Uh, this is really just single-family homes, impact activities. Home additions, private pools, sheds, uh, private drainage improvements, individual lot grading, efforts, re-removals, uh, things of that nature. So it was just kind of capturing what, uh, a homeowner would want to do on their property. So we're proposing that be exempt, uh, from the regulations. The Flood Resiliency Committee, they did have concerns about exempting those type of activities. Uh, and felt like that, uh, needed some more discussion, uh, and. It was told to them, we were bringing it to the Planning Commission for more discussion. Of course, we will circle back. Uh, to the Flood Resiliency Committee, um, with that one. But, um, the intent there, if I can elaborate a little bit, is. Subdivisions come in a more manageable, uh, a manageable pace to the town of Mount Pleasant. Building permits for additions, decks, sheds, pools. We have over nine hundred plus, uh, per year. We average consistently throughout, you know, recent history. So we go through twenty to thirty every week. And we also review those and we review those that we have commented on in the previous month. So it starts snowballing and then that just kind of adds and adds. And the likelihood of, of, um, you know, impacts to wetlands of an existing home is. Uh, not as high as let's say a subdivision that is, uh, being proposed. Uh, in the unincorporated areas that it has been undeveloped for many, many years. So we felt like residential home sites would be a good one to. Put in the exemption list, but.
Like I, I agree with the thought process, but I think there's that gray area of people that have larger lots. That there's probably a higher chance that they have, you know, if you have a two acre or a three acre lot. There's a higher chance that you have something on it. So I don't know if it would make sense to try to pick a size where like if you're. This size or less than, and you're doing home improvement stuff, you're exempt. But like if you have like a one or one and a half or you, at certain size, I would think it would make sense to just kind of keep an eye on it.
Excellent point. I do have another slide. That will kind of delve a little bit into that and give some options and some pros and cons of what, how we can actually kind of go through that a little bit. But yeah, very good point. There's not many two to three acre residential lots in Mount Pleasant that does not want to subdivide their property though. So, but there are, and there are, you know, outliers and exceptions and things like that. So yes, very good point. Um, and worth a little bit more discussion. So, um, the last one is E. Uh, we, you know, we'll elaborate a little bit more on the overriding public interest as in parks, uh. Major infrastructure, things like that. Um, the Flood Resiliency Committee members would like for us to. Uh, kind of tighten that up just a little bit to, uh, town, uh, uh, related projects such as parks, things of that nature. So we will, uh, be, uh, tweaking that as well. So, and lastly, and I'll get back to the exceptions here at, on the next slide. But, uh, this would actually come back before you all, uh, for review. Uh, being the Planning Commission and the, uh, regulatory body saying yes or no to these sort of layouts and requests and subdivision requests. Where these wetlands are and where, you know, the, the lots need to be and, and, uh, things of that nature. So I think this is the appropriate body to be looking at those type of, um, land development standards. So it's consistent. So what I, uh, so one more slide. So some of the target, uh, focus points, uh, uh. We wanted to trigger this by the creation of one lot. We wanted to, uh, en-engage a, a technical professional to evaluate wetlands. We also wanted to discuss the buffer widths and things like that, uh, with the Green Commission. And, um, and determine, you know, the distance from an established wetland area. So those were discussed. And put before the Green Commission in this way. And, um, and of course they voted for one to move this along to the, to the next point. Um, now, this is my slide that we, we can discuss. This is a, an added slide as a result of the, the Flood Resiliency Committee. Uh, recommendation how to address the single-family development impacts. There are three options, uh, there may be a fourth one or fifth one. Uh, but the first option, which is, uh, which is similar to other municipalities that are moving forward is. Have the owner provide an affidavit saying that there are no known wetlands on their property, uh, to the best of their knowledge. And that is in other regulations. Uh, the second one is staff field verify. And, uh, look at these sites, um, at the building permit level. Uh, we look at them for trees. A drainage, um, so it wouldn't be that much of an add-on. But we are sending someone that is not trained to determine wetlands or not wetlands, whether you can develop here or develop there. Stuff like that. So that is a, a, a touchy matter that, um, we would have to address internally. And, uh, and if we did suspect it, then we would, uh, mandate that the owner would engage a professional to determine, uh, yes or no. So, and then the third one, of course, is, uh, establish a minimum soil disturbance that triggers a wetland professional. And that might be something that could address what you were talking about. Is let's say, uh, more than two thousand, uh, square feet of, uh, disturbance related to your building permit. Then you would actually be mandated to engage a wetland professional to determine whether or not they, you are impactful. Um, or there could be a combination of these three. So I wanted to leave this, uh, here for you guys to discuss. And provide some guidance so we can kind of take this back to the Flood Resiliency Committee. I think that's the last slide. Yes, that is it. Sorry for the long presentation, but.
So, um, any questions for Kevin while we have him right now?
I've, I've got a few questions. Hey, a great presentation, Kevin and Maeve. Um, just a couple of things, just curiosity as we formulate, you know, the parameters. So any subdivision request is what I'm understanding would, uh, be beholden to this, correct? Anyone that brings it in, it would be part of their criteria. If it's two lots, one lot into two or, or whatever, they would have to. Seek a professional, correct?
That's what staff is recommending. That's it. Yes, sir.
What, uh, could those parcels theoretically, Kevin, be landlocked, uh, pieces? Or they would have to, so if you've got an isolated wetland, let's just say on a four acre site. Would it, could it, or is the intent of it that it's gotta be combined, uh, with and it's gotta be owned? What's the ownership factor, I guess, uh, for those wetlands? Would that be part of the, an HOA?
Well, uh, the way it's proposed now, it could be incorporated into the lot itself, but it would actually be on a recorded plat. Identifying that as a protected area with a buffer around it. It would not be a standalone like HOA parcel. That's how it's proposed.
Okay.
I had a question related to that, cause on over five acres, I think you say it like has to be owned by an HOA. I had a question related to that because on over five acres, I think you say it like has to be owned by an HOA.
Yeah.
But is every subdivision over five acres setting up an HOA?
No, I mean theoretically it could be off of existing road frontage, I guess, and.
Yeah, it could be a very long linear parcel of land that actually they would because they would, then the stormwater regulations would kick in and you would have to have a retention pond because you're adding impervious surface. And then that would create the need for a uh, shared parcel owned by an HOA, making that an HOA area. So there would be, there would need to be some type of HOA created. Um, that would then um, be responsible for making sure that the, the wetlands uh, is incorporated into their open space area.
And Kevin, just to go along with that, so is there, and, and I know you guys in the commission have done a lot of uh, due diligence with this. I guess long-term or, or are we asking for any kind of uh, covenant or anything in placed on top of it, or is it just a, shown as a protected area? This isolates part.
Right now, it would be shown as protected area on a recorded plat uh, during a subdivision, uh, the creation of a new lot. And any new owners would be buying a piece of property that actually has that disclosed to them at the time of their, of their purchase and uh, short answer, no, we don't have a separate document other than the ordinance that would be created in the land development regulations and that would be referenced on the plat. Um, I don't know if there really needs to be like a deed restriction to go along with that or anything like that, but there will be knowledgeable, uh, I mean, uh, information on the plat. Uh, and I think it would be enforceable that way if someone bought the property and filled it in.
Okay. Okay, those are my questions. Hey, um, appreciate it. A lot of work, it looks like.
Kevin, has there been an inventory of, of these uh, wetlands around?
Not in the town of Mount Pleasant. Now, you know, uh, I referenced the uh, National Wetland Inventory.
Right.
But that is.
That's the non-isolated, right.
Uh, and, and early on when we were presenting it to the Flood Resiliency Committee, we, we showed them a comparison with the rifle range road park where it did have a, a nice large uh, track of wetlands and how that was overlaid on top of it. There was a representation of a wetland area on top of it in proximity, but the actual boots on the ground delineation uh, was, was not that close, but it was there. Like, like if I was using that database and someone came before the town to develop that property out, that would be a good useful tool to say you do have wetlands on there. There's an indication of wetlands on there. We are using this. So you have to take it to the next level to get that delineated.
Okay.
I mean, I'm, I like a combination of these. I'm not quite sure exactly whether it should be all three or all three completely, but one question I have about an owner affidavit is if it's, if it's not true, what recourse does the town have? I'm sure there are other owner affidavits that come in with applications. What happens when they're, they misrepresent something?
Well, I mean, that's a great question, Ms. Ireland. Uh, you know, that's, this is also, that particular statement is also on the exceptions of other municipalities that are moving forward with that. Um, there's always going to be that question when it comes to uh, you know, someone misrepresenting themselves or someone that uh, may not be uh, knowledgeable in recognizing wetlands, but um, we would just have to figure this out as this goes.
Yeah.
You know, so uh, we're not going to be able to create a perfect ordinance.
Right.
I guarantee you.
Don't, don't we have an, do we have an owner's affidavit when there's a building permit requested?
Yes, ma'am.
And so what happens?
When they subdivide, there's an owner.
An owner's affidavit. So I mean, it would be the same kind of thing, I would think. What recourse does the town?
Sure.
Have, if that is.
The, the ramifications of that, if a permit has not been issued, we could withhold a permit based on that.
Okay.
If a permit is issued and there is, there is damage, it can be taken fine um, for any of the ordinances. Um, it would be difficult to bring a civil action, but it could be cause for that as well, so.
Okay, but someone could be denied a permit for bill, a building permit if something is found to not be.
Yes, ma'am. That's right. It's like anyone that submits anything to the town, that information is determined to be false.
Okay.
We can deny applications, withhold permits and the like.
I just want to make sure there's teeth to it, you know, because somebody can sign anything.
You, you're right though. At, three years down the line, it's going to be very difficult to enforce.
Is there, like legally, if you lie on one of these owner affidavits and get denied a permit, can you come back in the next day and try to get a permit again? And like, is there like a waiting period, like a punishment period or?
Like the penalty box?
Well, I'm just saying like if the penalty is big to lie, people are gonna not, wanna lie, you know?
Unfortunately, unfortunately, once, once it's brought in conformity, we don't have a choice in the matter.
That's why I like a combination and not just the owner's affidavit.
I knew y'all would like the combination. I was hoping the one and two, honestly. Uh, the, the third one does provide another level of complexity uh, with that. Um, but it, you know, starting out, uh, I think, you know, there's some good options here uh, to address the, the concerns of the mayor and the committee.
I think if you like broadcast this to the town, neighbors will, you know, you know, neighbors who care about this stuff will be, be your ally.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
But if nobody knows about it, they're not going to care what their neighbors do.
Yeah.
We, we've advertised in the, this is kind of an unofficial public hearing. So we did advertise in the paper. We put it on the social media, didn't we? Didn't we? We can, uh, we can, we'll, we can do that as well.
I mean, I think as to the staff field verification, is, is, if someone's going out to check other things as well, which they do, it, as long as you have that, if it's reasonably suspected, I mean, you know, then I think it's not putting too much burden on the person and it, you know, it's, it's not going to be a break, you know, make or break. But if they see something that looks like it's got water on it and, you know, they might, that's a reasonable suspicion, then that does trigger something. I think that's a reasonable trigger.
I think if you do some like minimal education with the staff that will be going out doing the other surveys, they don't have to necessarily be an expert, but as long as they get like, you know, a few lunch and learns or something, they'll know what to like look out for.
Wetlands are, uh, they can be dry, you know, I mean.
They're tricky.
They, they can be dry. Uh, there's soil type, there's vegetation and there's also uh, little creatures and stuff that do live within that, that are not as obvious if you're just looking around somebody's backyard. So there, there will need to be some, some training. And I'm not sure to the extent and, and the demand and stuff like that, that's, that'll, we'll have to answer that question once we kind of get rolling, I think.
Any additional like questions or input for, for staff? If not, this is listed as a public hearing.
Great.
So we'll, we'll have to open that up to anyone who cares.
I just, I did want to say that the exception for things like pools and things, I do have a problem with, you know, people just not having to deal with any wetlands protection because they want to put in a pool or. I just feel that's way beyond what people should be able to do on their property, given.
Accessory functions are like not a right.
Just not a right. Like I think building a home, you know, is, I understand. But some of those other things that are in the exceptions, and I haven't parsed through every one of them, but as a, just as a first blush, I feel like that is too much of an exception.
Yeah, I agree with you.
Oh, okay. So you're, you're in concurrence with how the committee is, wants us to address this, so.
To narrow the exception so that we're imposing more on the single homeowner.
Yeah.
But you do understand staff is uh, our position on this matter. So we were bringing something before you that was administratively manageable.
Yeah.
And uh, we will, we will do our very best to figure out how, if the, if it moves forward in that direction.
Uh, yeah.
How to manage this from a workload.
Understanding that, my preference would be, you know, so I understand the, the practical dilemma, but.
I get it. I get it. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Again, this is a public hearing, so if there's someone here to speak on this topic, please do so.
Good evening. Uh, my name is Suzie Carlson and I'm an attorney with the Southern Environmental Law Center and a resident of Mount Pleasant. My address is 423 King Street, uh, Mount Pleasant, 29464.
Could you just speak up a little bit more to the mic?
Sorry.
Thanks.
Um, my address is 423 King Street, Mount Pleasant, 29464. Um, I want to begin by sincerely thanking the town for its hard work on this wetlands ordinance. We were the ones who submitted those late comments, so I am up here to clarify that we strongly support this ordinance and the goal of those comments was merely to echo the sentiments that Ms. Ireland just brought up, that we think that those exceptions are too broad. Uh, as was pointed out earlier, recent changes at the federal level have left significant gaps in wetland protection. Local governments can play a crucial role in filling this gap. Policies like the proposed wetlands ordinance help to ensure that ecologically critical wetland areas within our town retain necessary safeguards to protect their important functions. Protecting wetlands is not just an environmental issue, but also a public safety and economic issue. As South Carolina faces more intense storms and sea level rise, the natural flood protection that wetlands provide is more important than ever. A single acre wetland can store up to one and a half million gallons of floodwater. Nationwide coastal wetlands provide more than $23 billion in storm protection services each year. These natural systems save communities money, reduce property damage and protect lives. Wetlands also support our town's vital tourism and fishing industries by supporting recreational activities like fishing, hunting and wildlife viewing. Protecting wetlands therefore means that protecting, that we are protecting the character and economy of our town. For these reasons, I want to reiterate SCLC's support for the town of Mount Pleasant and for your thoughtful, careful deliberation on this proposed ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Hello again. Elise Campagne, 1314 Wayne Street, Mount Pleasant. Um, speaking as a resident and as the board chair for Charleston Waterkeeper, I am so proud of our town for tackling, tackling this at the committee level, the commission level, the staff level. This is a place for us to really shine in terms of leadership. Um, and um, I really applaud the thoughtful discussion even here tonight on just the first cut at looking at a really complex uh, issue. I just wanted to make one small comment on an exception related to um, property where no wetlands have been prior found, previously found. And I know we need to have a standard by which to measure the wetlands, but that really kind of flies in the face of our intent of planning for future conditions and moving with what we're seeing already with sea level rise and marsh migration. So would encourage some just consideration about how to make sure that that is a forward-looking um, delineation as the science improves to um, keep changing with it. And just thinking in my, my own uh, recent memory, you know, a number of properties along Hadrell, off of Rifle Range, off of Vincent, you know, you can see those change in the wetland conditions. And so I think it's just an element for, to, to look into further as you're putting the finishing touches on this. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Anyone else? If not, we'll close the public hearing. Okay, so Mr. Mitchell, I mean, you've heard the input. Um, I don't know, we're necessarily taking a vote, but you've got some advice and some recommendations, I think.
I think so, and this is being recorded, so I'll go back.
Yeah.
And jot down some notes and uh, it'll go before the uh, next Flood Resiliency Committee as well as the Planning Committee, right Peter? If this will go, the Planning and the Flood. So uh, so yes, there'll be opportunity there and I will report back some of the commentary there. We'll, we'll try to take it, move it forward.
Good.
So thank you very much. I really appreciate it.
Okay, thank you. Um, so members of the commission, we've been at this for an hour and 45 minutes. Do we want to take a 10 minute break or do we want to keep, keep moving forward? Okay. Everybody good? All right, we'll keep, we'll keep moving forward.
Good.
Uh, item uh, seven, well, I think uh, I was uh, drawn. We're on seven J, um, sketch plan for Spring Hope Drive.
Logan. Yes, so for you tonight is the sketch plan for Spring Hope Drive. They are proposing to subdivide a 1.44 acre lot off Spring Hope Drive into six single family residential lots. And this is zone R4. They are applying with a land development regulations waiver for subdividing off a private access easement. And the approv, uh, the action to be taken tonight is approval, approval with conditions or denial. So this is an aerial image of Spring Hope Drive on the lot um, off of Six Mile Road. This is just a bird's eye image in order to see it a little bit better than the neighborhood. Zone R4 and the future land use is traditional residential neighborhood. So this is the site plan for you tonight, um, creating six lots, accessing the back four lots off of a 40 foot private road. Around the perimeter of the lot is a 10 foot type A buffer. Stormwater is to be detained in the back on a um, HOA lot that is approximately 0.61 acres. And then we go into the tree plan. So they are proposing to remove four protected trees, three of those being historic. The three historic are pine trees, one in good condition, one in poor and one in fair. The one protected tree in good condition, there's a live oak that is proposed to be removed. Um, there is encroachment into those two uh, historic trees in the back. They have provided a tree protection plan to help with the health of those trees throughout the building process. So this is zone R4, um, lot dimensional requirements are 40 foot width with a 50 foot depth and minimum square feet of 4,000. Each lot is approximately 0.1 acres. One protected tree and three historic trees are proposed for removal and they're applying with an LDR waiver to subdivide off a private ingress egress. They are currently meeting the 160 inch DBH per acre requirement. 58.5 inches are required to be mitigated through either planting or paying through the tree mitigation bank. And this is to be done prior to final plat approval. The subdivider or developer shall be responsible for providing positive drainage for each lot individually as part of the project developed in accordance with 155.051. Water and wastewater extensions are required to serve the lots and impact fees due before subdivision plat approval for the new lots. The lot width does not allow for a 50 foot public right of way with two lots mandated to have a minimum width of 40 feet. The applicant is applying with an LDR waiver to allow for the 40 foot private right of way to meet the minimum lot widths. All staff comments on the stormwater NOI are to be addressed during preliminary plat review. So these are the applicant's LDR waiver responses and staff comments to those responses. So I won't read over everyone, but I'll just um, touch on the staff comments. So for um, A1, the hardship is the inability to create two adjacent lots with accessibility to the rear portion for other subdivisions. This is a geometric constraint that doesn't justify as a topographical, nor is an effort to avoid wetlands, critical, uh, critical areas or trees. A2, a typical six lot subdivision would be required to install a standard 50 foot right of way with a standard road for dedication. And A3 and A4, private roads are not inspected by our field engineers and they are not privy to testy, uh, testing and materials used. They have limited authority to fail, reject work or require additional provisions for unsuitable materials. It is not uncommon for future homeowners to assume these roads are publicly owned and be unaware of future maintenance obligations until they come due. So I'm not sure if the applicant is here tonight, I hope they are. Uh, they can answer any questions and I can answer any questions on the slides as well. So I'll go back to the site plan for reference. So I'll go back to the site plan for reference.
Thank you. The applicant here?
Danny Cruz, nineteen sixty-six Twickenham Place, Mount Pleasant, South Carolina. I am, uh, the civil engineer for this project, um, I own and operate C A Engineering out of Mount Pleasant, South Carolina. Uh, I will say the staff did a pretty good job explaining this project, so I'm, um, I don't really have anything extra to add. I'm just here for the board's discussion. If you guys have any question, I'll be more than happy to answer it. Thank you.
Discussion? Or questions for anyone?
I just have one question for staff, um, and maybe I should know this and don't, on the trees, uh, would that not have to go before B C A? Uh, or is that something that Planning Commission has jurisdiction to approve?
During subdivision requests, it would be under, uh, Planning Commission's jurisdiction.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Anyone else?
I'll mention, my concerns are that the, um, the conditions or the responses for the L D R waiver are really not adequate, in my opinion. I'm very concerned about private rights of way for all the reasons that were mentioned. Um, also, just because of a geographic constraint, because something is zoned R four doesn't mean you automatically have the right to build that many, you know, so, um, and it's very clear in our ordinance that all four conditions to get a waiver of the L D Rs have to be present, and I don't think that condition, those conditions have been met.
Yeah, I tend to agree with Ms. Ireland. I think there's several concerns here and for all the reasons that she's articulated, I, I'm, I'm not enthused about this project either.
I agree.
Okay, you want to make a motion?
Yeah, I, I make a motion that we deny the application.
Is there a second?
Second.
From Ms. Mansour. Okay, we'll take a vote then. All those in favor of denial of this, uh, sketch plan, um, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any, uh, in favor? Okay. Uh, item seven K, sketch plan for, uh, Zero Hale Road.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As you know, uh, with the vested rights being good for two years and after that, annual extensions for it, uh, are requested, and that's per state code, and unless there is a change in the ordinance that affects the development standards, it is permitted to move forward. So that is what this, uh, sketch plan that was approved previously, um, is now requesting.
Okay, question for Mr. Stone?
I guess I'm not entirely sure what the, what, you know, what the issue is here.
So they have a vested right in order to undertake this development plan. Uh, the state law requires initial two-year period of vesting. And in order to gain one annual extension up to five more years, total of seven, uh, they have to return to the vesting body that originally approved it. So Planning Commission approved this, uh, back in twenty twenty-two, I believe. And it is now returning back, um, and state law, the, the way it's worded says that the the commission or whatever body is, this is being requested of, must approve this unless there is something that prohibits it and staff's reviewed and there's nothing that we can find that would prohibit this approval.
So they're, they're seeking an extension.
So we're just kicking the road, we're just kicking it down the road for a while, basically.
Yeah, so I'm.
Giving them more latitude to start your project, yeah.
I'll move to approve the extension for one year.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Smythe. Um, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, thank you, sir. And, um, L, seven L, um, another sketch plan for vested rights extension at thirteen seventy Rifle Range Road.
That is correct, and the same, uh, request for this property.
Okay. Yeah, I don't think anything's changed. It sounds like we're mostly bound anyway, so.
I'll move to approve the extension for one year. Second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Good. And we'll finish with, uh, item seven M, which is a presentation on engineering on density standards.
Yeah. This is the most I've ever, uh, talked in front of you guys for one night, I can tell you. So this is, this is the continuation of what we, uh, talked about and y'all provided some very good direction for us to go back and, uh, and make some proposals, uh, for you that we'll go through very quickly tonight, uh, won't take up too much time. Uh, but if you do recall, we went through some examples of subdivisions, um, and, uh, there was, you know, a list we provided, um, and I apologize, I should have had that, uh, queued up as a, as a little bit of a refresher, but this was one of the slides, um, that we went through, um, how the gross area is basically calculated. And then what went into the gross area because, uh, that's where the kind of the, the, uh, exceptions and, and it gets in very detailed, but what, what was decided upon was, um, and what was recommended is in our, uh, one fifty-six ordinance, our density requirements, there's an exception there for less than one acres that the density standards do not apply for subdivisions. Okay, so, uh, it kind of goes back to what I was talking about earlier about what, you know, Mount Pleasant is going to be facing in the foreseeable future and, and we have been seeing those, uh, a little more frequently is those smaller subdivision requests that uh, that are less than one acre. And because they're less than one acre, um, you can actually get higher density with that because of this exception. Um, uh, here's the, here's the ordinance here, it's one fifty-six, so it's in the zoning code. Um, and highlighted here is equal to or greater than, uh, one acre in size, um, as it pertains to the, uh, subdi-, uh, density standards. Very simply, the, uh, what we have proposed is in red, uh, struck through black. Um, so we're just basically striking through that exception of equal to or greater than and just making it is applicable to all parcels of land regardless of parcel size. So, nothing real complicated there, we're doing that. Next, um, is the, the other, uh, direction we received was to address the, uh, ingress egress, uh, being used for the subdivisions themselves. In our land development regulations, one fifty-five, under blocks and lots, it's, uh, lots shall be accessible by improved public streets except with, with these exceptions. And also flag lots shall not be permitted. Uh, those two items, uh, require the applicant, if they were to move forward with ingress egress easement for subdivisions or if not, would require them to submit a waiver request for y'all's review. So what, this is a little bit, it's not as straightforward as the density, uh, item we just looked at, so I've given you options. I've, I've kind of teased this out again for, for the discussion of the Planning Commission, uh, to provide, uh, some possibilities of drafting, uh, an ordinance to move forward. Um, one possibility is to prohibit the easement area from being included within the minimum lot size to meet the zoning requirements. And I do have an example on the next slide, but I've, I've added pros and cons to each. The pro being, uh, by doing that, it ensures that the visibility and the, the, the character uh, is what was intended by, for the zone. Okay, so you don't have one lot taken up by a driveway that now appears and looks to be out of character with the zoning requirements as a smaller lot. Uh, the cons are, uh, what would be the difficult thing that would be proposed by this is now it would actually require larger lots to meet that requirement too, uh, because now you would not be able to count that ingress egress air, area that is being serviced by another lot for your minimum lot requirement. Okay, so that's one option that we could, uh, move forward. The second option is allow flag lots, uh, require the access be a part of the lot, which essentially does generally the same thing because the pole of the flag lot would not be included in the minimum lot size of the lot that it's crossing. It also would clean up the ownership issue because now you actually own the property that you're putting a driveway on accessing the, uh, property in the back. The cons would be that requires more area to be, uh, the minimum lot size uh, for the not lot, not being used, that's the lot that is, uh, the one in the fronts. But it, but the last area for the lot being used means that the pole would actually be included in the flag area as meeting the minimum lot size. So you would actually have to have a larger, you would not have to need to have a larger lot in the back to meet the minimum requirements because now you can include that area, so. Uh, again, something to consider here, uh, and then third, um, change the building setback measurement from the property line, which is currently there now to where the easement boundary is, and that is consistent with Charleston County, the way they have it right now. Makes a lot of sense. Right now, uh, the building setback line is measured from kind of the other side of the easement, if I can show you. Just as an example, the easement, ingress egress easement, the red hatched area, you know, the setbacks, as you see, it goes all the way to the boundary of the easement, um. That last one would be, okay, now you have to set your building setback, if that's twenty-five feet, then it has to be twenty-five feet from the drive. So that does make a lot of sense, uh, and Charleston, again, Charleston County does have, does have that in place. However, uh, you, if you didn't do the one and two, then you would still be able to include that minimum lot size, so. Looking for some direction, happy to entertain other ideas or other suggestions. Or either we can put in a draft ordinance together for you guys to take a look at next month.
So if we want to preclude flag lots, what does number two do? I'm not sure, it seems like it's completely contrary to the thing that says flag lots are prohibited. So I'm just confused.
Two is just saying we're gonna start allowing it again.
Yeah.
What was the reason to not allow them when they need that change?
Well, uh, you know, this dates back, and I'm gonna give a stab at this.
Okay.
You know, along the, the marsh area, you get lots that are pie shapes or kind of open up as you move farther back. You know, naturally because of the curvature of the shoreline and all that, uh, I think, uh, that was actually put in place to help prevent someone from putting a lot or in their backyard that, uh, that would be a flag lot. And I'm going off memory from the old senior planner we used to have that explained it to me years and years ago because I asked him the same question, but uh, it was, it was to protect the integrity of the larger lots that were on the perimeter or the shoreline area, but there could be other explanations for this. Um, uh, you know, another one would be just to have a harmonious subdivision development pattern and not it being parceled up with ingress egress easements and little driveways here and there, which, you know.
And, and I'll just add that from a practical standpoint, access to those lots becomes a real hassle and imposition for the neighbors. I mean, I live, uh, I don't know, my lot line is twenty feet from a flag lot. And they've been doing construction for, uh, three years and it's imposed, the project is imposed on everyone who surrounds it. And it's not just, not just inconvenient, we're talking about, you know, waking up at seven o'clock in the morning and having heavy equipment and a drive that you use to get in and out of, of your, uh, you know, property. So, and, and, you know, it's just.
Are you saying a flag or, because a flag lot, they own the driveway, you wouldn't own it?
No, I get it, but they, but, 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 but because they've consumed everything on their lot and their access is limited to something that's narrow, they have to take, they have to ask for permission and sort of lean on their neighbors to provide them with access for the cranes and the tree trucks and the the building products trucks and the concrete truck and the, you know, you just go down this list and it's, it's, it's bad. It's bad. And it's not just once, you know, on, on, on an occasion, I mean, it's been persistent for a few years. And I've, I've observed similar in other parts of the neighborhood and it's just.
Would it have been any different if that was an easement though? Like, I, the thing I don't understand is the difference between a flag lot and two lots with an easement that serves as the pole of one flag.
The thing I don't like about them is that it, it just encourages people to just add more houses, to subdivide lots that are landlocked by streets and just shove another house right in back of one that's a street-facing lot. It just doubles up the densities as it, you know, each one, it's a slippery slope and each one that happens, suddenly you've got double the density in a neighborhood.
What if someone breaks the lot up, provides an easement, it's the same thing?
That's, yeah.
From a functionality standpoint, it is the same thing.
Like you, you allow it, you just have to get an easement, basically.
From a functional behavioral type perspective of when you're sent, there's no really new difference, uh.
I mean, generally in the old Mount Pleasant area, we're just, we're trying to reduce this from happening because it's happening a lot. We've seen it a lot. Uh, this is, that's why.
For many years.
I think.
We've seen a lot for many years.
Item one though, item one is. Item one then is gonna make it so less of them can be split, if that's what you want.
Um, I mean, I like number one as well, but I also, but I also like prohibiting.
Yeah, I'm kind of in favor of item or option three too, though. I mean, I think.
I like one and three.
Yeah.
I don't really get two and I don't really want to, but one and three I like.
Yeah, I, I agree with that.
I mean, the goal of this is to is to prevent density. That is what the goal of this is. Allowing flag lots just creates density, it's also harder for first responders to get to those lots. Exactly, it just, it really, it doubles the densities.
Yeah.
I agree with one and three too, you know, anything we can do, in my opinion, to decrease density for the town is a good idea.
The only thing I'm just wondering about is like, does the person that lives on the street that has access, if it's an easement next to them through their lot, like, why should they have to maintain a piece of their property for someone else's benefit? Like, that's the kind of weird thing about it.
Well, often when you do an easement agreement, you know, you, you divvy that up or you have, you know, certain maintenance requirements by the other party or that's kind of a private thing, but I mean, but I think our concern is not having every narrow long lot with limited street space end up with two houses instead of one.
Right, that's exactly right.
Is there a way that you could, like, I, I just, I guess I struggle with like the easement versus the flag pole, like, have it be part of the back lot but excluded from, like, the requirements? So it minimizes the amount of times you can do it, but puts the onus of maintaining that strip on the person who's using it. And sets the setback, you know, in a way that we want. Like, I, I don't know.
One and three does that, and two does that too. If you, if you look at, so if you combine one and two, I meant one and three, you've essentially done number two.
Right.
For most, you know.
Yeah.
For the purposes of trying to accomplish the, uh, the subdivision and making sure that it does meet the spirit of the zoning that it's in. Otherwise, what hasn't been happening is that these lots are being created with a twenty-foot easement on it and they're meeting the minimum lot requirements for the zoning included in, including the. And they're meeting the minimum lot requirements for the zoning included in, including the easement on their property.
Yeah, that doesn't make sense, that's why I'm saying the, like, have the pole being part of a lot makes more sense. You know, from.
Yeah, the front lot would actually have to meet the minimum lot dimensional requirements if the pole was part of the back lot too. Essentially, we're doing the same thing.
The front lot gets to be a little bigger, which is the one everyone sees, should be bigger, I think.
I, I think we're forgetting that this also would apply to side-by-side subdivision. I can't, it would also apply to side-by-side subdivision, so I think we're getting caught in the weeds of flag lots.
Yeah. I think Michelle.
Like, like, if it's a lot and it's lengthwise, right, this is gonna affect, right, it's a rectangular lot and you're subdividing it.
You would have access to a public road in that scenario, if it's a long rectangular lot.
Then they both have the street out.
Faces the road, then you would have the access and you wouldn't even need the easement or the flag lot.
I mean, we've denied flag, we have denied flag lots at multiple meetings here, you know, I mean, I think, to me, the, the flag lot is a dead issue, it's not even. From my point of view, it's not even worth talking about anymore because I don't think it ought to happen.
But the other issue is like the person in front who has the easement, on paper, their lot looks larger. So like theoretically, they're paying like taxes on a larger lot than they really have functional use of.
But if you're, if you own a lot and you're giving an easement, then you want the, you know, there's something for it, I mean, otherwise you don't have to give an easement.
But I think what happens is one person owns both of them and they're setting it up amongst themselves because they're, you know.
But then if you're gonna sell one of them, I mean, in other words, it's kind of buyer beware.
Right, you're buying the condition that you're, that is existing for the new owner.
A developer, I mean, in Old Mount Pleasant, or any lot that they can subdivide, they're gonna subdivide. They don't intend on owning either of them.
That's what we're trying to prevent or limit as much as we possibly can.
I think like the condition where like one person is subdividing their lot and then gonna have a neighbor is probably. Occurring less than like a developer buying it and trying to maximize their ROI. So like they're setting up the agreement for the easement amongst themselves.
Yeah.
It's not amongst two neighbors.
Often, right.
So that's why I think like the flag lot has some validity because someone is legally responsible for it.
I think it's like saying two, two wrongs don't make a right, I mean, in other words, I think when we have a situation where someone's proposing a subdivision. And they're gonna need to put an easement, we have to look at that individually and there may be things we are disagree with. But that doesn't mean that we should then allow flag lots because we might allow some easements on lot, on subdivisions. In other words, just because one might not, might have some burdens, doesn't mean we should just allow both.
I guess what I'm saying is the negative that you see with the flag lot, I think can be accommodated by an adjustment in what's counted in a. Lot area and setbacks.
I, I don't, I'm not convinced of that, I mean, I'd have to think about that, I'm not.
Need to see an exhibit.
Yeah, I, I think this could be a multitude of cases, but yeah, I think flag lots in general are just problematic.
Bad ideas.
I agree, and one, one, I think one and three for now address the good, bad experience with seeing a lot of these proposals. Probably addresses the good majority of our concerns, I would think.
I do like those, I don't know if we need to vote on something.
Well, I, I, I will bring, I will bring a draft back.
Mm-hmm, okay.
Could you, like, with item one, you could rewrite that as the pole of the flag doesn't count or whatever, you know, like. I feel like you could do the same thing either way, like you could get the same outcome. Whether the pole is owned or it's an easement, like.
Well, I think it gets to an ownership thing and, and whether, and again, everybody's got a, uh, an opinion. I think the consensus is that, that flag pole is just problematic and I could see where. That could be stackable in multiple scenarios and just, uh, be a problem. And, and again, Kevin, this is for, uh, just the ability to apply, ask for a waiver request, right? I mean, this is, I mean, all of this, I mean, none of this is, uh, typical, uh, subdivision standard, correct?
Uh, this, this would be an LDR change that would create the standard. And if you didn't meet the standard, then you'd have to request a waiver to meet the standard.
Okay.
So this would provide the planning commission with more leverage to get what is intended. Whatever the planning commission would like to intend for this to do, it would provide more leverage for them to ensure that those things are met.
Yeah, okay.
This would be like we had the one flag lot that's on the cans, that's near the fire station that came before us last year. And they wanted to subdivide the flag lot. So this would have given us more teeth when we said you can't subdivide flag lots.
Right. Okay, I think mostly you heard one and three.
Yeah, and, and I like the, the one fifty-five point oh four seven C, I mean, three. About flag lots shall not be permitted, but I do have a question about C, the lots, the first part there. Um, it says lots shall be accessible by improved public streets, except as provided below. And the two things that are exceptions, one is postage stamp lots. Can, can we delete those? Because I don't think we like those, do we? Why would we accept that? Wouldn't they want to go get a waiver for, you know, the LDRs if they needed?
Ms. Ireland, this comes back to that postage stamp lot is, uh, was created during the recession. I know that for a fact, uh, and, um, um, I feel like some people have taken advantage of. Not well, have used the postage stamp lot to be able to subdivide because they wanted to sell and they, the banks were not lending because they needed fee simple lots. And therefore they had to do.
But the ones that exist that happened during the recession would be non-conforming properties, so they still exist and have the right to. Exist and to, you know, recreate their property if there's an act of God or something, right? I just wouldn't want to have more of them.
I'd love to reduce a lot of the ordinances, honestly, so, but it, it does, it, you know. There are, yeah, it would create a non-conformity situation.
There aren't very many of them, I don't think, right?
I don't think there are.
Yeah, I mean, my suggestion is just, it, this sounds like we're encouraging more postage stamp lots by making them an exception. To having to have public access and I don't really, we want these lots as a, I understand why they were allowed. In that limited timeframe, you know, or why that became an issue, but, um.
So this is current conditions, and so Ms. Ireland, I think what you're asking is to add to and strike that out of current conditions?
Is to, is to say that, um, one of the things that lots require is improve, is accessibility by improved public streets. And I'm saying that postage stamp lots don't need public access if they have the, if this is an exception here. And I sort of don't want to encourage more of those. So that's, I'm trying to figure out a way to not have those. So by taking that out, I thought maybe that would be a way to, um, you know, if you wanted a postage stamp lot, you would go. And apply for a waiver to the LDRs, right, because you would say, I'm not meeting C one. And here's why, and this is why I want a waiver. But this would give you no reason to have to get a waiver because you're already accepted.
This is an existing ordinance, so if you met the exception, then you would not need a waiver.
Exactly, so that's right, so by taking that out. You would have, have to have a waiver to have a postage stamp lot, unless you have one existing already, which is a non-conformity.
Well, you know, then you have to meet the other lot dimensional requirements too, you know, to create a lot on, with a structure on it.
Okay, so I guess what I'm asking is why keep this here?
Yeah.
What's the, what's the benefit of having this here? If we have another recession, I mean, I don't really understand what the.
There was a reason and a purpose, and I did not delve into this when we were going through the density stuff last time, so I'm, I'm not really.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just making this suggestion that.
Right, no, I, yeah, we ought to take another look at that.
I really do think we should.
I'll be happy to bring this back for you next month and.
Yeah.
We could take a look, a little bit, dive a little bit deeper into the postage stamp stuff and.
And then the second one, sorry, I hate, hate to prolong this meeting, but the second one is. Another exception of having accessibility to a public street is subdivision of a residential lot containing more than one dwelling unit. So that means if you have a one lot that already has two houses on it, let's say. Then you can subdivide those without needing public access.
That's correct.
But wouldn't that create a flag lot or an easement situation?
It would, it would, but there's some conditions that I did not provide in this slide. That, um, that make those situations unique.
I think you have to allow that because you can't force someone to like tear down a house.
Well, I mean, if you, there's, there's not a right to subdivide, you have to get approval to subdivide.
Exactly, exactly.
It's not a, it's not a right. Um, I'm just wondering if, if having this exception undoes some of what we just discussed before about the, the, you know, flag lot sort of issue. Just trying to tighten these things up, it's not just like I'm reading that.
I would think, I mean, there's so many obviously conditions out there, but I, I would think if somebody came before this body and they wanted to subdivide. And they had two structures on one property, they would have to meet all of the conditions and then it would be before us to, you know, approve. But I think that the easement or a waiver from the LDR would, you know, be an option, yeah.
That's why I kind of want them to, to ask for the waiver so that they do meet conditions that warrant giving them that. As opposed to just saying it's my right, you know, you.
They met the criteria.
I guess that's why, sorry to add more things, but it just seems that. I'm trying to read all these things and how they work against one another and it just seems to me that these are things that probably don't really belong there anymore.
Yeah, the LDR regulations are very old, uh.
Yeah, since we're, since we're improving some, just giving you a couple more things to work on there, Kevin.
What, what's the immediate need though? Cause you can go on and on with the LDR regulations. Yeah, y'all want to go through that again?
No.
No.
You were not around when we went through the zoning.
Since we're on this particular provision and one of them does seem to indicate flag lots, you know, the one that's you're subdividing with two homes, but. Anyway, I, I mean, I'm only one person, so I defer to the rest of the commissioners here for whether they want you to continue to pursue that. But I don't want to hold up the rest of it, I just, just like we did last time where we said, we really would like you to come back with something prohibiting flag lots. Um, and, you know, and eliminating the over one acre thing. That's just something else to put on the list, the to-do list.
Do you want me to hold off on the density and the easement?
No, no.
So move, let's move forward some draft ordinance and then also.
Go forward with this, but put the other on the to-do list and something else to discuss when we have a shorter agenda.
Okay. Yep, okay, I agree, thank you.
So I'm just thinking too much sometimes.
One and three.
One and three.
One and, thank you.
Mr. Stone, I guess other business, uh, you're gonna share possibly a little more regarding the county council in ten mile.
Yes, sir, um, so as you know, um, last, last two gen items here, take these quick, um, last night. Um, Charleston County Council approved the ten-mile community overlay district. And it did apply the one unit per three acre standard to its rural neighborhood areas. And it also did a couple other things, um, and it's, it's pretty specific. It, uh, one of those instances, it removed the maximum square footage for accessory dwelling units. So where ours and theirs was eight fifty, um, there's, I mean, it could be as large as a, another principal structure. And it just allows more housing options and, um, kind of addressing that missing middle housing. There are, um, tailored commercial uses there. Their body that approves, well, sorry, their body that reviews subdivisions also has that DRB capacity. And per state law, planning commission has been designated as the vesting body with subdivisions. They cannot approve subdivisions, but they recommend to planning commission these subdivision requests. And often come along with design standards and, uh, ar- architectural and, um, and even paint color. So that is, that is what, um, they have reviewed and been working on and they, uh, approved it last night. And based on our November special meeting, just an update on, on where this is at was requested, so that is, that is, uh, what's going on with ten mile.
Thank you.
Yep. And finally. We have the, uh, twenty twenty-five development agreement report, uh, every year, we just kind of give a quick overview of. The active development agreements that we have within the town. As we know, Carolina Park is currently still active, they have met all of their transportation improvement standards. And, uh, Carolina Park is, uh, still in effect until September of twenty twenty-eight. The Liberty Hill Farms, uh, has received final plat for all phases, uh, they have dedicated open space. Uh, their trail system is complete and all infrastructure and services have been constructed to meet town standards. And there's now a dedicated, uh, two-year maintenance bond that goes along with that. So it's, it's not something we've taken over and if something goes wrong, we're responsible, they're still responsible for maintaining those for the next two years as we do warranty inspections. And that is set to expire in twenty twenty-eight. And finally, as you know, in October of last year, the Patriots Annex Development Agreement did expire. But they have a pilot agreement that was, uh, codified under a separate ordinance, it was a resolution nineteen one oh two. So the payment in lieu of taxes agreement for any improvements that they make on the site, that will be captured. Under that agreement and does not go away with this development agreement, so just wanted to let you know about that. Any questions, I'd be glad to answer.
Questions?
No.
I don't think so.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, adjourned.
Thank y'all, appreciate it.
Thank you.